These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting. And good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer. Unplug just a little bit. And head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena. Located on the sunrise shore of Michigan. Only a few hours drive, but miles away from the way to the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay. Where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse. Or the mast that jut into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena. A haven from the world. That's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at Michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the municipal council meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the city of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening, welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting of August 17th, 2015. Call the order please.
Johnson? Nielsen?
Here.
Noak?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walgore?
Here.
And now for the, I guess for notes, Councilwoman Johnson did get prior notice that she wouldn't be here today. I'm most happy to play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've had an opportunity to read the regular session minutes from August 3rd, 2015. Karen, will you have the?
Next time.
Next meeting for a special meeting?
We didn't have them done, yes.
That's fine. I just wanted to check them out.
I know they were very short, but we just didn't show it on staff.
Okay, that's fine. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a meeting that you are allowed to. If you do, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. Noak? I do have a really quick, uh, non-agenda item myself. I was asked by the museum staff to put out a quick reminder for a program that was in our budget for the Lake Huron Discovery Tour. It's Friday, October 9th, 2015 to Monday, October 12th, 2015. Quick summary on their website is to chart your own course on a voyage of discovery based on your own area of interest. Whether it be hiking, Art Trail Gallery Tours, bird watching, color tours, the Wine and Hops Trail, history, maritime, lighthouses, or many other things. Discover over 1,500 things to see and do along the Lake Huron coast. You can plan your own unique Plan Your Trip on their webpage. They have several different categories for that. If you're also interested, you may purchase said sign, "Discover Me on 23", at the Chamber of Commerce for $10. And what people have been doing with the sign is going around and taking a photo of yourself or your group at a location of your choice and posting it on their website. US23HeritageRoute.org or on their Facebook page, Lake Huron Discovery Tour, or on their @LakeHuronTour on Twitter and Instagram. And their hashtags are #DiscoveryTour, MoreToSeeOn23, and ChartYourOwnCourse. So, um, immediately following the meeting, I've asked any council members that would like to join me out in front of our heritage cannon on the front grounds to take a quick picture and put on the website for them. That's my announcement this evening. Okay, the consent agenda. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $348,397.30. B is one mayoral appointment to the Historic District Study Committee for an undefined term, Matthew McCormick. C is one council appointment of the Assistant City Attorney for a two-year term, Nancy Ward. And D is designation of voting delegate and alternate for the annual Michigan Municipal League Business Meeting held on September 17th, 2015. And that will be Councilwoman Nielsen and City Manager Sundin.
Just to let you know, I will not be attending. I'll be attending a different conference.
So that will be Councilwoman Nielsen. That'd be fine, thanks.
As long as she's there, she's the voting member anyway.
Okay, great. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walgore?
Hi.
We have nothing else on the agenda down until Report of Officers, a one-year renewal option on property and liability insurance.
I'll try to summarize it a little bit. The city initiated a request for proposals for property and liability insurance back in 2011. And the proposal was awarded to Alpena Agency for a three-year coverage term with three one-year renewals. That was December 1, 2011 through December 1, 2014. Our claim loss was very low at that time. That made us very desirable to insurance companies. Unfortunately, in the last several years, we've had claims of over 100,000. And basically, that was a snowplow or a street sweeper that got hit. We had a few ambulances hit deers, and then we had some trip and falls. Fortunately, that's kind of leveled out. And we discussed with our carrier, Trident's the carrier for Alpena Agency. They said that in 1516, which would be December 1, we'd start our new year. They think our rates are going to stay flat unless we would have a budget that would increase substantially. Because then they could see more liability in that, or if we have some large claims. So with that being the case, and our working relationship with Alpena Agency is very good. I wanted to come back now because if we don't do this, then I would have to go out for bed. I would like to ask us to renew with Alpena Agency December 1st for another year. And I did put a history on the back, and you can see we are very, still very low compared to our past rates with carriers. Do we have any questions?
I don't. I move we approve the renewal of the insurance with Alpena Agency and Trident, I think it was.
Second.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walgore? Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you. Karen? Communications and Petitions, Art in the Loft, presentation on the Community Mural Project. I apologize for not asking her name, so please introduce yourselves when you come up, I'm sorry.
We will. I'm Karen Bennett. I'm the Vice President for Art in the Loft. This is Justin Christensen-Cooper, and he is the gallery coordinator. I've got some numbers that I'll ask if I can pass. This is the Community Make the Splash for Art mural. And I think rather than me telling you about it, it would be better to watch it than I'll tell you sooner about it.
The Make the Splash for Art Community Mural Project features an aquascape depicting a shipwreck, divers, and aquatic life below the water. The mural not only is a work of public art created by well-known Michigan mural artist Tony Hendrick, it is also the backdrop for 13 supersized, colorful, and whimsical three-dimensional fish, designed by the members of our community and sculpted by the artist. The mural is 1,815 square feet in size and will be installed on a 30-foot by 60-foot wall in the heart of downtown Alpena. It's a blank wall of a building that sits next to a City Pocket Park. There are three main phases to the mural project, two of which have already been done. This project was initially conceived in 2012 and is now in its final and third stage. Let's see a little bit more details about these three stages. The first phase of the mural project was our Call for Art and Scale Design Phase. This involved a summer-long call for fish art to our community where residents and tourists submitted potential fish designs that would eventually be made into three-dimensional fish. Then our lead artist, Tony Hendrick, selected 13 of those and so far has made nine of them into those large-scale Styrofoam 3D fish that you've seen. Then a scale design was created using the selected fish and a shipwreck mural. Let's find out a little bit more about how Tony works in his studio.
Hi, I'm Tony Hendrick. I'm the lead artist on the Make the Splash mural project for Alpena. I'm going to take you on a tour inside my shop and talk a little bit about the mural. This mural is going to be a 66-foot by 32-foot mural. And it's unique in that it's also going to include sculptural fish.
Phase two of the mural project is the Community Painting Workshop Stage. This is which Art in the Loft hosted three workshop sessions under the direction of Mr. Hendrick for the community to collaborate on the painting of the fish. The third phase of the mural project is the actual mural painting and installation. And this is where we're really asking for your help. What we want to do is get this mural up on the wall as you can see in the scale models below. This mural really will embody the maritime heritage deep in Alpena's history. Let's take a look at Tony and how those fish are going to be arranged and how this mural's going to be installed.
We held four workshops where people came and painted on that fish. Really fun time, a lot of energy, a lot of colors going on, as you can see. The gestures of the fish were very whimsical, so we wanted to keep that feel when painting the fish. Now, these fish, they go on the mural. Once I paint the mural, I'm going to adjust the colors a little bit and give them to pop off the mural. The mural is going to be painted here inside my shop. And it's painted on these aluminum composite panels, which are very lightweight. It's easy to install and the equipment is water-resistant, so there's no issues with water later down the road. And the way that they get installed is in four-by-eight foot panels. I attach a tree lumber to the wall that it's going to be installed on. And you just simply attach the panels to that lumber.
To give you an idea. Last two areas I'd like to talk about with the mural project is the impact that the mural will have in the downtown Alpena area, as well as our goal that we're trying to reach to make this happen and put that mural on the wall. The goal of the project is to provide a high-quality public arts project that will capture the viewer's imagination, inspire creativity, and foster collaboration among individuals of all ages and abilities. Here are two examples of how this mural will do that. The mural reflects the Great Lakes Maritime Heritage of Northeast Michigan and its pride in underwater treasures along its shore. This includes hundreds of archaeologically significant shipwrecks, which are part of the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary, as well as the abundant natural and recreational resources of the region. The mural will be seen by every resident and tourist in the area due to its strategic and highly visible location in the heart of downtown Alpena. It will provide a landmark and artistic backdrop for those gathering in the small park in front of the mural. It is a popular spot for visitors to gather, take photographs, or participate in such events as the evening's farmer's market or other downtown activities. The last art I'd like to discuss is our goal. Not only monetarily, what we need to finish this project, but what we get out of it and how you can help to be a part of that. To make this mural a reality, we have a $15,000 goal through Patronicity. However, we are working with the MEDC, which is the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. If we reach our goal of $15,000, they will also match it with $15,000. So every dollar you give is doubled.
So that gives you an overview that I couldn't possibly do verbally. And that, as you can see, that video has a few little glitches we need to work out. But that is a video that will actually be posted on the Patronicity website, which is a crowdfunding website. And the money on that website, as you saw, is matched by the MEDC. We've had preliminary meetings. Adam Poole was the person who made us aware of this source of funding and arranged for us to meet with Dan Leonard. And we had that meeting several weeks ago. And it was a very positive meeting. We are now waiting for the official approval from the MEDC. But apparently, that's going to take a few more days. Once, once we have that approval, assuming we do have it, we want to launch this campaign immediately and run it for 30 days. Our goal is to hopefully raise the money in time to complete this mural so that it can be seen during the tour that you just talked about, during the Lake Huron Discovery Tour, which is going to be in early October. So we're under a tight timeframe to do this if we want to try to get it done this year. And we do, because this has been going on for over two years now, and we're ready to see it on the wall. The fish are all in Art in the Loft right now, or in Tony's workshop. And we'd really like to see them where they belong on the wall. What you're seeing right now is the Patronicity website. And when people log into that website, they will see what our goal is and how much of it has been raised. They will be able to see the video that we posted on that. They will also be able to, as you see, scroll down and find text about the mural project. So everything that a donor would need to know about the project is found on the Patronicity website. So this is something that we hope not only people in Alpena will donate to, but this is something that would be publicized around the state. Tony Hendrick is a well-known Michigan artist. In fact, he has the, he's in the Guinness Book of Records for the largest indoor mural in the world, which is at the Kalamazoo Air Museum. So he's, he's very well-known. We've worked with him before. He's very professional. He worked with us on the Community Project Mural for Hope at the Alpena Cancer Center several years ago. And that was a very good project. So, as you can see from the numbers that I gave you, the money that we have already spent on this mural, you'll see that down at the paid-to-date, almost near the bottom, is $18,137. That has come from several sources of funding, including the Michigan Humanities Council being the largest funder of that, and the Community Foundation for Northeast Michigan, and the Community Foundation's Youth Advisory Council. So we have gotten grants from all of those organizations. We also were approved for a contribution by the Alpena DDA to this project, which has not been received or spent yet because we want to put that into the Patronicity campaign so that it can be doubled. And you can see that after that money is spent, the balance that is, that will be due on this project is $27,988. So we were, it was recommended by Dan Leonard that we have this be a $30,000 project with a $15,000 match. So what I'm asking the council for today is basically three things. First and foremost would be your public support of this project. It's definitely a great placemaking project, as well as focusing on, you know, one of the, one of the key attributes of this area being the maritime heritage. So we're asking for that. We're also asking for your monetary support. We would greatly appreciate support in the amount of $5,000. And the third thing that we're asking for is a little harder to explain. But when people give us money towards this Patronicity grant, we don't have the money in our pocket that we can use to buy materials, pay the artist, and so forth. It is submitted to the MEDC, and we don't have that money until the grant, until that campaign is ended and the, and the goal is met. After that point, then the MEDC would fund the project and give the money to the city, as I understand it, and it would then come to us. So what we're also asking for is in advance pending the completion of the campaign. So that we have funds, and what we would be asking for is no more than the funds we already have raised and committed. So I think at the most, we would need $10,000 to get to the end of this project before we would owe the whole amount. So we're looking for some basically sort of working capital to get us to the end of this project and have that advanced against the money that we've already, that's already been committed to the project. So that's what we're asking for, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So the Patronicity website, and I'm not as familiar with that one as I am some of the other more popular ones that you see on social media and whatnot. Patronicity is part of MEDC?
Yes.
Okay.
It is their crowdfunding website. So it's like a Kickstarter, only, you know...
Approved through them?
Yes.
Okay.
And it is, it is their way of, what they are looking for is placemaking projects and things that are shovel-ready, sort of, you know, ready to go. And we received great feedback from Dan Leonard. And he said he thought this was one of the coolest projects that they have on Patronicity.com right now. So if you go to that website now, you can look at all of the projects that are being funded. Right now, they've been, they have a very high success rate in the high 90s. So projects that go on this website generally get funded.
It's pretty exciting. And it doesn't mean, what you're looking for doesn't seem to be astronomical to me compared to some of the other projects just throughout Alpena that are getting funded by the, by local citizens and businesses and whatnot. So it doesn't seem extravagant. I'm going to, I haven't been on there yet, obviously, but I'm guessing that it can be shared on Facebook.
Yes, it's a Facebook page. And we would, what the MEDC has told us is that once they give their approval, we have to wait five days for them to make the first announcement before we can put it on Facebook or do anything like that. So, but as soon as that happens, then, then we would be, you know, asking, we've already spoken to the newspaper and the media about this. And, you know, we would be prepared to immediately launch it and make sure that it got highly publicized through social media and other media.
Well, number one's easy. Talking about the importance of placemaking, we can do that. But, you know, to me, it's not a standalone project when you look at other things downtown and, you know, the different scrims that have went up and other public art. And I think this will just, you know, inspire more people to contribute to that. You know, I know placemaking is generally considered as community, but I think your center building down there is, is kind of hard of what we're trying to establish. And Alpena is, you know, we, we have a lot to offer outdoors, and we have a lot of heritage here. But we also can be hip and artistic and cool and cultural. And it's nice to kind of have a central location for that. I think this would just, you know, really add to, you know, the center of our artistic community. So it's, it's a good timing, it's a great spot for it, something I think would stay pretty timeless. And it's not going to get beat to death in the weather. Like, it depends on where you put them, but where that is, I think it would probably hold up.
And each fish Tony supports with basically what a rebar is what it would be. And he just tests up to 700 pounds because it's accounting for snow, ice, and litter buildup, that kind of stuff.
And he's done, you know, he hasn't done a mural project like this with the sculptural fish, but he has done many outdoor community mural projects. And he guarantees them for up to 25 years. He comes back, he, he comes annually and looks at the mural of Hope and determines if anything needs to be done to it. So it's going to be maintained and it's, I think you're right, Sean, that having it be right where it is. And especially having kids be able to see that their fish that they designed is going to be on a wall in the center of town and is going to be there not just today, but, you know, 25 years from now. That's a pretty cool thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Greg, can we ask staff to take a look at that second and third request?
Well, we have already looked at least at the second. I get, now, what I'm going to give you is my opinion. So obviously, what you do as a body is up to you. But as City Manager, the, was it Patronicity or whatever, if I got it right? The website, the intent is to crowdfunding, is to get the community involved and to raise the money hopefully through the community. I know the DDA, I was not at the meeting, couldn't be, but that they did commit $5,000, which basically is going towards that 15. At least what I've been told, whether it's correct or not, I don't know, is that once these, doing crowdfunding, once they reach their goal, basically people quit giving because you've hit the target. There's no need to give more. It's not like they just keep giving and giving, they generally stop. I think our community is very generous. And this project has not yet started with Patronicity. Hopefully, in the next week, let's say, it will get going. And it's up for 30 days. What I would recommend is that we wait and let it go through its course and let it do its thing with the public. We have two council meetings within that 30 days in September. Is that we look maybe at that, even that second meeting and come back, give us where you are. And then if there is a need, we can look at filling the gap to hit the goal up to a limit. The thing is, this is not in our budget, this money. We did put $13,000 into community promotions, of which 5,000 of that went to MacNe. 5,000 is going to the CVB for the branding projects. And another 3,000 that I believe, if I remember right, I asked Karen to put in because you never know when things come up. So what we have within the budget is $3,000. Obviously, you can take it out of fund balance. I would, as the City Manager, prefer that we not. Simply because at this point in time, we are still working on a, as a deficit budget. Though those deficits are shrinking each budget year. And we are getting closer to where we are either going to be breaking even or actually having surplus. We are not there yet. And so taking out of the fund balance should really be a last resort for projects, something that comes up that we absolutely have to do and have no, no other choice as far as where the funds come from. So that would be my recommendation. But first of all, is let this process work itself through. We may find, and I would not be the least bit surprised, that it isn't even needed, that the money will be there. Right now, it's $10,000 because of the 5,000 seeds you have. That the community will indeed raise that money without a great deal of difficulty. And I think that says more than if we, or even if it was DDA, you know, whatever it gives it, is when it comes from the community, that says a whole lot more about us. And I think, I would like it, at least my recommendation would be is let's do that. And then ask Karen to come back at our second meeting, which, whatever date that would be, the 20th or thereabouts of September. And give us where we're at with that crowdfunding process. And then the council can look at, if there's a shortfall, what we can do.
If I could speak to that, we're certainly happy to do that. And of course, if we didn't need the money, we would not ask the city to put in money until we were at the end of it. So that if we do raise the money, and I agree with you, it says more about the project if it's supported by the community as a whole. The only problem for us is... The only problem for us is that in order to make the commitment to the artist so that he can begin this painting so we can get it on the wall this year, if we wait until the end of September to make that commitment, then it will not go up this year. We will not have time to do it. So we're sort of looking to, to the city to say, yes, we have that support if needed, and, you know, otherwise, we are not comfortable making a commitment to the artist and contracting with him to pay money that we don't have. So that's, that's our dilemma, and it's really just a timing issue. But I certainly understand your concerns, and I certainly, you know, think that you're right about all of your comments.
Just as far as the last one, I don't know. We have not had any internal discussion regarding that, of an essence, I guess it would be like a loan of money that would, I guess, be repaid, that 10,000?
Yeah, what's the funds from your Patronicity?
I know the DDA, we're having a meeting, I think, Thursday morning, a special meeting about the same thing, they requested of the DDA, so, and as I'm looking at 20,000, is that my understanding between the two? On that, this loan type?
No, I don't think that we would need that much. I think probably 10,000 total to get to the end of the project. What we need to do is to be able to pay for the materials, pay the artist some upfront cost so that this can be done, because we know that, you know, the money won't just be there magically at the end of this project on the 30th day. As you know, there's a lot of paperwork that is involved with getting these MEDC grants and getting the money coming in. So, you know, we want to know that, we're just looking at trying to get funds so that we can make the project go forward right now, not have to wait until the end of the funding period, and not have to wait until the money comes in from the MEDC. So that's the idea of the loan. Whether it comes from the DDA, whether it comes from the city, it doesn't much matter to us.
As I said, we have not, you know, discussed that. I suppose if it's looked at as a loan, that could come out of fund balance and then just be put back in when it's repaid, if the council wants to do that. I don't know what the DDA is going to do in terms of, I know at first they had to determine whether they could even do that, and that's been looked into, and it was determined that under the state statute of the powers of the DDA that they can. It's, I guess, the question's going to be is how much, you know, if they want to do this, is how much are they going to do?
Does the DDA pay us?
There's a pretty good chance they might be able to, I don't know.
And I, and yeah, I'll be at that meeting, because I'm on the board, Thursday morning at, well, 7:30 or something.
Have we ever done anything like that?
Loan money like that? I couldn't say.
What would happen if we didn't, what would happen if you didn't get that crowdfunding?
It's an all-in-hub.
I mean, and we gave you the 10, so you'd just give it back?
We would have to, we would still have to repay you, obviously, yeah.
How, how would you do that, I mean, if you didn't have that crowdfunding? It would have to be termed out over a period of time, obviously, we wouldn't be able to, without the crowdfunding, if that were not successful, you know, and I hate to even think about that possibility. I think it will be successful, but if it were not, we wouldn't need time to repay that. You know, it wouldn't be something we'd be able to do in, you know, 30 days after the crowdfunding ended. We'd have to raise the money separately and repay it that way.
You would just continue your fundraising effort, some other means?
Yes.
This is a, it's a wonderful project. It has to happen. I, everybody is in support of the project, and, and I don't deny, if we were going to loan money, this would be the place to do it. But are we opening a floodgate for every organization to come before us and, and say the same thing? If you can't front the money, then we can't have the project. And that, that is my only concern, because I know you'll find, I know you're going to get the money, but, I think I know. But is...
We're pretty determined, I'll tell you that.
I can tell, I can tell.
Now, is it, this might be for Adam, I guess, is there a deadline for the MEDC's match to this, to raising our half of the 15? And I say "our," I mean the community's half to the 15 grand. Is there a time limit on that, or just a time limit on the Patronicity?
Basically, it's one and the same. It's a 30-day time limit from when the, when the door opens to when it shuts.
So they're tied together?
Correct.
So if you, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if the crowdfunding doesn't get to the point where it needs to be, which I guess is 15,000, then both that 15 and the MED's match 15 go away, and so you continue to fundraise, which I'm, I have no doubt that in some period of time, you will be able to raise that fund. It doesn't, just doesn't seem astronomical to me. But all of that, so it'll be, so now the fundraising will become 30 instead of 15, just to, just so, is that a fair...
Yes, that's, that's the really, the key here, and you pit upon it, is that matching, that matching fund, which is, you know, so critical. And that's why, yeah, I, I probably should have also told you that, in addition to the DDA funds of $5,000, we also have another grant from the Community Foundation for another 2,500. So we already have 7,500 of the 15,000 committed. You know, if, if, if all else failed, if the city wanted to contribute, the rest we'd be done and we'd be paid back. So, you know, I think that there is very little risk here, but, you know, it's, it's just a question of if we wait to do the project till next year, because with the weather closing in, the timeframe is just not going to allow it to get done. If we don't contract with the artist now and say, let's move forward, we want to get it up on the wall, you know...
And I don't, and you'd still, even if that scenario I just said were to happen, you're still only borrowing a certain amount from the city of Alpena or the DDA. It's not like we would be borrowing more to you, because you'll just borrow in that point to get your artist going.
Yes.
I don't, I don't have an issue, like, like Susan mentioned, about making decisions one time at another, I don't, obviously, and I've said that before under different situations, that I really don't, I'm not a, I don't concern myself with setting a precedent, I guess, because that's what, I feel like I was elected to come up here and make a decision each time someone comes in. I try not to set an overall precedent, and we talked about that with the Peace Poll as well. I don't have an issue with what you're asking. I guess my only, my only thought would be, can we, can our decision be made on the 7th? So by then, we will know what the DDA is looking to do, so we're all, Greg will be at the DDA meeting, he'll be able to come back at our first meeting in September, which is the 7th, and say, this is what, this is what I've talked about with the DDA, this is what, as a group, we're able to do, not only with the DDA, but...
The other thing that maybe it lets us do is one, if we're going to do a loan, is that we put a document together, basically a loan document. I don't know if, 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 I don't know if you're willing to do this or not, that if it's paid, we paid within a certain period after, and I don't know what that is, in terms of getting the money, I'd probably sit down with Adam and talk to him about it, that we get the money that it could be repaid, whether it's 30 or 60 days after, you know, you get the funding from the MEDC, that there's no interest. But if it, if we, if you don't get that money, or if there's something else that is going to be a longer term, that there may be some interest on that money, or on that loan, that it's not just out there for a year or two years with no interest. So maybe we could, that would give us a chance to draft that.
I would have a problem.
By, by, because our meeting is on the 7th, I believe, of September, it's the Tuesday after Labor Day. So we could bring it back at that meeting for discussion by council, and we could certainly get a copy of it to you beforehand, Karen. So before the meeting, you'd have a chance to look at it, you wouldn't just see it for the first time at the meeting. And if we could do that, then we could at least, you know, if that's a direction you want to go, to look at that, we could, you know, hopefully I'll know by Thursday what the DDA is doing, and then we can sit down with...
And would the crowdfunding start right away too?
Well, a couple of weeks into that, I guess.
Well, yeah, yeah, so I would hope that that's at least a week into it, on the, on the crowdfunding, so we can begin to see how that goes. I, I guess, though I'm not 100% comfortable with this, the other is with the, you're still saying you would like a commitment on the other money as well, what, what we would actually put into the project now, to be able to go to the artist and say, you know, we have this money committed. Is that correct?
I, I think it could happen in a number of different ways, but I think that, you know, we need, before we can contract with the artist to say who we paid at this time, we need to know that money is there, whether it's borrowed money, I mean, we would prefer that it not be borrowed money, we would prefer that it's all committed and that it's granted to us, but we certainly understand your reasons for not doing that. We certainly understand your reasons for deciding at a later time whether to do that. So, you know, any of those things are possibilities, and the most important thing is that you support the project and, you know, that, I'm getting the sense that we can come back if we need to come back, you know, but we would like to have some way of going ahead now, whether that be an approval of a loan on the terms that you talked about with no interest, if it's paid back immediately through the crowdfunding, if the crowdfunding doesn't work, that there'd be an interest-based loan. That, that would be totally acceptable to us. That would allow us to move forward and say to the artist, okay, we have the funds, we're able to proceed. So, you know, if you feel that you need additional time to talk to the DDA about that, you know, of course, we understand that. Our preference would be able to say yes to the artist right now and get moving, because every week we let wait is one more week that it isn't getting done. But we, we certainly understand, and we know the need for discussion with the DDA, so, you know, whatever your preference is, whatever you're comfortable with.
Mr. Mayor, I certainly would propose that we refer back to staff and have them look into this for the next meeting. I think I would be more comfortable if we have Bill kind of give it a quick look and just make sure that we're not by, in violation from loaning money out, either based on any resolution we have or state guideline and such, as well as, you know, referring to staff.
For me, it's like I'm a strong supporter of the arts and a very strong supporter of this project, because I absolutely, you know, I think it's a great idea, as Sean and the mayor have both said. It's really tough that we ask a staff to stay within our budgets yearly, and then we have money set aside for things that come up. To go beyond that, I'm certainly not in favor of dipping into a general fund and increasing that. I'd like us to live within our budget if we can, because we are asking our staff to do that, and they do a fantastic job of doing that, so, but I would be comfortable if we get some more information from the DDA and such in, in moving forward with something. I'm not sure if the amount's $1,000 or whatever would be.
I, I would support that, I really would, just because it seems all new. No one here seems really super comfortable with it without knowing more, I guess, even from Bill's perspective, as to whether, what the legalities are, and I'd be interested in what, what, what the DDA or what we can do with them. Possibly it would be from them through us, or from us through them, you know, maybe there's some other creative things that we can do to get this done. I certainly want to get it done, and as soon as possible. Unfortunately, we don't meet every week, and so I hope that still somehow meets your timetable to get them started. And I certainly appreciate what Susan had said, by the way. That opinions like that usually keep people like me out of trouble. So, so I certainly appreciate what you had to say about, about starting a precedent, but I think we're all really in favor of this project.
Absolutely.
I think it's a citywide project, and hopefully we can get this done, and Greg will keep us, if you learn something before the next meeting, you want to send out a quick email. It wouldn't be our first special meeting, so...
I mean, that's always a possibility, too. We could always have a special meeting once we, if we had to, you know, like next week, before Labor Day, if we know that, once we see what the DDA is doing. I know, because, you know, whether, if you're looking at a 10 total, whether they would say 5, we would say 5, I don't know. Or maybe they just want to fund the whole, whole thing, and in which case, go have that $10,000 commitment Thursday. So I, I think we could move quickly if we had to, just like we did last week.
Yeah, and I don't want to have a million special meetings, or, that's exaggerated, but I wouldn't want to have too many of them, but the ones that we have had have been extenuating circumstances, and this one would probably be the same, so.
Agreed.
Let's go with that.
And then we can still look at the, the other, as far as an actual donation, either on that first meeting or whatever, by seeing, okay, where are you, you know, in the, in the process? My guess is that a lot of the donations are going to come in, probably in the first week or two, the first half of that time, I'm sure.
Well, they, they say that a large part of the donations come in in the first and the last week, the last few days and the first few days are...
And do that, attempt.
Okay. Do we need a motion to refer back to staff? So moved.
Second.
Saxton?
Yes.
Waldora?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
I'm going to be adjourned.
Second.
You are watching All About Alpena.